Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Vader City Council. It is Thursday, February 27th. The time is 6:03 PM. Roll call.
Donna Rogers here. Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Schein.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
And Samantha Lovelady here.
All right, we have a quorum. Everyone that is on the council is here. Pledge allegiance. Jason, will you give the honors?
Sure. Thank you.
Got it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. The Park Board is holding an open public information gathering session tomorrow night afternoon, 4:30 to 6:30. This information is going to be part of their Parks Master Plan. There's a section in there for public input, so that's what this will be for. There are flyers on the table for that event that's tomorrow. Also, there is going to be an online survey. It's probably going to be Facebook and emails and things and be on the city website to also solicit public input as well, and all that will be included in the Parks Master Plan. Today, our chairman, Park Chairman, she met with Kim Sellers from the RCO, which is the organization that hands out money for parks, and they went over the grant submission process. And so today, they filed an extension because a Park Master Plan is a requirement for that grant, and so they know that we're almost done with that. So they applied for an extension today. Item two, state capital budget line item request. So I was in contact. I got ahold of, tried to get ahold of both of our state representatives and our senator. One representative and one senator got back to me. Senator, excuse me, Representative Ed Orkut. I was talking with him, and he's going to try to put our wastewater treatment facility, the remaining amount, the $1.5 million, onto a state capital budget line item. And so the state would just fund it through their normal budget process. So he's going to try to get that submitted. The application date was a week prior to us getting it in, but he says he's going to try to squeeze it in. And if they can't this year, they're still next year. We can do that every year. In fact, you can use that process to request money to pay off loans. So even if we do get the loan, we can still make this request later on to pay off the loan. And we can make that request through both the House and the Senate, so we'll have different opportunities for that. So keep our fingers crossed on that one. We did get a grant through RMSA for full funding of an update for the Vader employee policies. And so we'll see that later on in the agenda to start talking about what we'd like to see changed, if we do want changes, but that will be fully funded through a grant. Codification update. So our attorney is still working on the various things that need to happen at the state level for us to approve that new code. So that's still in the works.
What is it that has to...
So because we're updating things that include land use and environmental issues, it's going to need a SEPA, it's going to need to go to Department of Commerce for review, all of these different things are going to have to happen. She's working on the right way of making that.
Oh, I didn't realize that was in the... Okay.
Since it's all encompassing all of the different parts of our ordinances, it has all of that in there.
All of it. Oh, okay.
So it has to hit all those different agencies, and they all have to say, "You're good to go." So it's going to take a little bit. Outstanding Vader Municipal Court cases. So as you remember, some of the, when we switched from Winlock Municipal Court, Winlock District Court, Winlock District Court, is that the right way?
Vader Municipal.
Vader Municipal Court, which was ran by Winlock, to Lewis County, some folks, existing cases got kind of lost in the mix where Lewis County wasn't taking the existing cases, but the Winlock folks weren't going to be doing it either. And so we've been trying to work through that process of figuring out what to do with those cases. So we got ahold of the state agency that handles, Diane, what's the right way of saying what they handle?
Works in Washington.
So it's like an oversight, a Washington State Courts Oversight Department, I guess. Anyway, and they say that we're not going to be able to just take care of these cases ourselves. Some type of court system is going to have to do that. So Lewis County, in the end, is going to have to take care of these cases for us. So we're going to amend the contract that we have with Lewis County to include the old cases. So that's where we are right now. Planning Committee, they had a meeting last night. They did schedule for March 12th at 5:00 PM, which is a Thursday night, a public hearing to review the comp, the comp plan. This will be the last public hearing for that. And after that, it'll be able to come to council for approval. And lastly, I wanted to remind you of opportunities for training. Two meetings ago, I think I included that in your packet for some training. Both Diane and Stephanie are going to be going to the April 24th MRSC workshop on Public Records Acts. And so if you're interested in that, we do have a budget for council members to attend these types of things. In fact, them attending is going to be paid for through a grant, so the city won't have to pay for it.
Is that different than what the council members take online? Is that a different training class or...
I'm unsure of the exact content of it.
Okay. I just wondered because is this, is this about keeping public records, like here?
Diane, can you speak more to it?
It's about the handling of public records. We are in possession of all the documents, everything, our public records, and how we manage to keep them.
And that's on April 24th?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a cost for that?
Well, the city would pay for it, and then we have RMSA.
I mean, if I wanted to go?
Yeah. Right. It wouldn't cost you anything.
Oh, okay. So that's on April 24th?
Yes. There's also one on the 20th.
And that's the one I was going to go to also.
I'll leave that here so you can take a look at it.
All right.
That's all I have for the mayor's report. Council reports.
I'm going to give you a break.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, council reports? Mike, council report?
Nope.
Okay. Agenda approval. I do not have any changes to the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for 2/27/2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Lovelady. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the city council meeting on February 13th, 2020.
We have a motion by Ms. Lovelady to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. It's kind of odd not for me to, for me not to vote. I kept wanting to say, say something.
Aye, aye.
Old habits. Voucher approval.
I make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the end of February 2020 at $8,931.92 for a total for all of February at $63,393.36.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the vouchers. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Lovelady. Any discussion?
Do I need to, okay, I also need to report that there is amendment to the first of February for, that was reduced by $2,309.28, making the end of the first of February $26,231.62.
Do we still have a second for Mr. Daley's motion?
Yes.
Still have a second for Mr. Daley's motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mike, did you say aye? I think I heard the phone click.
I did.
All right. Motion carries. Special reports. No special reports. Just checking. Nope, he did not have a special report. He had paper in his hand, I know. He looks important back there.
Lions Club.
Sure, this will be a good time for the Lions Club. Go, please.
I have paperwork here, and we want to do our annual Easter egg hunt and do it over there on 6th, the park, like we do last year. That worked really well. We do three different sections. It's like toddler to five, six to nine, and nine to 13. And then we have three different baskets we give when they find the gold egg. And so then we clean everything up, and it takes, we want to start at 11, so we want to be able to be there like from nine to one maybe, but it doesn't take very long.
Excellent.
Last year, we had 35 kids.
Yeah, I've been there a couple times. It's a, it's a fun event. It's a lot of fun.
So I mean, do I need to have this...
Yeah, please talk to City Hall about it.
I did.
Oh, you did already? Okay, excellent.
I just need to have them sign.
Okay. Yeah, if you leave it here, and we'll sign it, and you can pick it up.
Later.
Later, or I guess I could sign it right now if you'd like. Saves someone a trip.
Let's just take care of business.
Is that all it needs, Diane? Just a signature? Oh, you can sign it?
There we go. And we have the insurance stuff. That was one of the...
Do we need to, like...
Vote on that?
Well, we have an application for parks usage, so we sure that went through that normal process, so we're good to go.
Yeah, we, like the same thing I did last year, I did it, so we've done, I guess this is like our 13th year or something, or whatever it is.
And the kids love it. My kids adored it last year.
We had a blast because I got these little plastic things, and we put them up as dividers, and they were bunnies and rabbits. I mean, and they just popped me around, and they pop right out.
It was fun.
Doesn't do any damage to it, so the kids have it around.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. City business. Item one on city business. Council to consider nomination or nominations for the vacant city council position three. The term length will be from the time appointed until the election of November 2021 is certified. So roughly Thanksgiving, that person would take their seat immediately. They wouldn't actually wait until the new year. Council has 90 days to select an applicant. Is there any action by council? Council, is there no, no action tonight? Are we going to table this until next time, next meeting?
I think we should wait and kind of give it a minute. We've only gotten one serious applicant and kind of put feelings out.
Okay. It is not unusual for the council to wait one extra meeting between a vacancy and when the appointment happens, so this is fairly, fairly normal. That's what we choose to do. Any other discussion on this topic?
So did, did those names need to go through the counties? I remember people signing up, and then they have to be, go through some auditor's office to make sure that they're good to sign up.
Right. Anyone that applies for city council would have to follow the normal election guidelines, be a resident of the city of Vader, be a registered voter, the city of Vader, not have any outstanding felonies that would prevent them from being a voter. Past felonies that are cleared are okay in Washington.
I think over the age of 18.
Yeah, that's a kicker.
Got to be a voter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyone that is interested in applying, it'd be great if they could submit a written, just a short, short letter to City Hall. I know Mo has done that. It's great. So that's it for now, I guess. Okay. Hearing no other discussion. Moving on to item two. Council to elect a mayor pro tem for the 2020-2021 biennium. As I am the mayor now, I am absolutely not the mayor pro tem, so council does need a new mayor pro tem.
I say Jason.
We have a nomination for Jason Daley.
I, I thought Samantha would be good.
Passing, passing along.
I'm fine with taking it if council chooses to do so. I probably have the most time on my hands, being a stay-at-home mom, and if the event that I need to step in, I have the ability to.
I, I thought about it all day, and I was, I was relieved to know that she wanted to.
I don't mind her.
Or she was okay with stepping up. I have a lot of things going on this summer. I know.
Any, it's a simple motion and second and a vote.
I make a motion that we select Samantha Lovelady as a mayor pro tem for 202021.
It's a lot of twos and zeros. We have a motion on the table by Mr. Daley to elect Samantha Lovelady as pro tem for the 2020-2021 biennium. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor of electing Samantha Lovelady as mayor pro tem of the city of Vader, say aye.
Aye.
Can I vote on that?
Yes.
Aye. Wasn't true.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item three on the agenda is Resolution 032020, Bank Signatories Update. So as you're aware, at the last council meeting, we did update the bank signatories with both our new clerks and myself as mayor, and removed the previous staff from that signatory. However, the mayor pro tem needs to always also be on there. So if you see it in your packet, you should have a blank resolution for the new mayor pro tem. So it would need to be updated to include Samantha. Do we have any council action on the resolution?
I approve the resolution.
I'll make it.
I move to approve Resolution 032020, leaving the list of authorized bank signatories to include Samantha Lovelady as mayor pro tem.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve Resolution 032020 to include Samantha Lovelady as a bank signatory. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Mr. Parsons. Any other discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 032020, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion carries. Council to discuss, item four. Council to discuss Vader Employee Personnel Policy Updates. So this is just conversation, just to get this started. You should have in your packet the lengthy employee policies. Obviously, this can be ongoing discussion, but it's not something to decide on tonight. The attorney in Tumwater that was recommended to us actually has other business to attend to up until the middle of March, so she wasn't going to be able to get to it anyway right away. But some things to, let's see, the key pages. I was going to put post-it notes in here. I guess what I just wanted to say is to take a look at what we currently do for various vacation allotments, floating holidays, sick time and things like that. The attorney will update this to make sure that it includes the proper state laws for family acts and sick times and things like that. But the council can add input too, if we want it to be slightly more generous than what we do currently. So I would just encourage you to start looking through this and have some notes, and we'll talk about it next time.
This attorney, I under, is this through a grant?
Mm-hmm.
So this isn't coming out of our...
Right, it'll be fully funded.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
And she's going to be adding in all the new laws about...
Yep, she's going to go through with a fine-tooth comb and...
Make sure we're up to...
Make sure it's all good to go. This is why our insurance company is interested in funding this through a grant, because it's a liability if we're not current. So I don't want to take too much time on it tonight, but get it going. So when you have some time, take a look at it.
What we like about you, Joe.
Great. Any other discussion on personnel policies tonight? Okay. Moving on to the next item of business, number five. Council to consider Resolution 042020, Interlocal Agreement for Fire Inspection Services. So Jason, I think you were on the council back when we had a previous agreement with Chehalis for their fire inspection services. The city got in trouble at one point where there was a fire, a house burned down. The fire department called the inspection services that are on record for the county, I believe, and they showed up, they did their inspection, and they sent the city a bill. And we didn't have a, Judy may have been on the council at the time. Yep. And we, and we got a bill, and we were like, what is this for? Why do we have this? So then we got a, we put a contract together with Chehalis. Well, Chehalis is no longer offering that service. There is a new gentleman that is doing it, who came through recommendation through the fire department, and so that is what the contract you have before you is about. So I can tell you that the main difference between this contract and the contract that we had with Chehalis, the hourly fees that are listed in this contract are within, are they're other than the same, within $5 an hour of what the Chehalis contract was. Also, the Chehalis contract did not have a maximum amount in that contract, and this one does have a maximum amount. So this contract is, is more favorable to the city of Vader. Do we have a question from the public? Are we ready for that? Go ahead.
I hope we don't have enough fires to add up to 10,000.
Yeah.
I have a business card from Townsend and Associates, our little inspectors, and it clearly states on there that they're fire inspectors. Is that something that we could, since we are hoping they would have a fire, but is that something they could pick up?
I'm not sure how that works, seeing that they might be a fire inspector for like commercial-type situations and not necessarily for, for...
Building these guys inspect actual fires when they're burned or caused them.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is for an emergency situation where the, where someone dies or gets hurt in a fire, or they think arson is involved, and, and that's what this contract is for, is for a gentleman that specializes in that. And I think he represents the entire county, isn't, is that correct?
He is setting up contracts individually with the cities on the recommendation of the county.
Yeah. So he's going to be the go-to person for all of the fire departments. They'll have him on their speed dial.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council on this agreement? A question from the audience.
Is, is your agreement on a individual basis, obviously, is houses burned, or do they get like a monthly, it'll be on, if there's a fire, then they show and...
Yeah, they're hourly.
Yeah. It's 145 an hour if they come in the dark, and 130 if it's daylight, $75 an hour for reports, instructions, and preparation, $75 an hour for meetings in person or by phone, or I don't know what VOIP means, but...
Voice-over-internet protocol.
Okay. And then there's 58 cents a mile for personal vehicle mileage and cost plus 10% for expenses. Mileage invoiced by the nearest mile, time invoiced at 15-minute increments.
Do we have...
Go ahead.
Do we have insurance that covers any of this type of person if we do need them? Does our insurance policy...
I don't believe so.
Does the city's insurance have anything that would back us up on an expense like that?
I think they, I think they expect to have this. Yeah, it's a pretty normal thing.
Do you have any idea what a typical fire inspection would cost?
If I remember correctly...
Probably three, four thousand.
Yeah, that was the bill that last time. It was, it was several thousand dollars. Yeah.
Thank you.
That was probably during the day, though, so...
Yes, yeah, yeah.
This guy works, he comes in the dark.
It's for batteries.
It's not called until daylight.
Yeah. Be honest.
Mo, you have something to say?
Question regarding, regarding what we're talking about with some of those extra things. You asked if there's insurance. Is there, is there grants or anything that can help us as a small rural community pay for some of those in the, in the case that it happens? Is there anything we can apply for?
Never heard of anything like that. I know the last time this happened, we started talking, asking around on what the normal, the normal thing to do is, and this is the normal, the normal thing for a city to do.
I'll, I'll look, because I, I wanted to say, when I lived in Forest Grove, they, down in Oregon, they had, they had, they had a county fund for the rural communities when they had natural disasters or fires or things like that, that they can jump in and help supply if something can't be paid for. So I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do some research, and if it's fruitful...
It'd be something to look into, for sure. It'd be something to look into, like is there...
Yeah, and if it's fruitful, if it's, if it's anything that might benefit us, I'll bring it, I'll bring it to the next council meeting.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Is there any discussion, another discussion from council? Need a motion if we decide to take action.
I make a motion that we consider, that I make a motion to consider the Resolution 04, to pass the Resolution 042020, the interlocal agreement for fire inspection services.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve Resolution 042020 for an interlo, uh, excuse me, an agreement with fire.
Judy, you were planning that agreement last week.
I can't say it either. We have a, we have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve Resolution 042020 for fire inspection services. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Lovelady. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number 042020, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. I didn't hear you again.
I think saying nothing is a no, right?
Did I say aye?
You did not.
Sorry. I was looking at something else. I was reading, aye, yes.
Okay, excellent. All right, motion carries. It was unanimous. I don't know if it's just me, or I just... I don't know if it's just me, or I just want to be sure to give your vote.
You got it.
Thank you. Alright. Item number six, Council discussed changing council meeting date and/or times. It was suggested by a couple of people, I think at the last council meeting, in the evening too. It was discussed after the meeting that it could be something to consider. Is the council interested in changing the meeting date and time?
For what purpose? I mean, is somebody having a problem being here on this day and time, or is...
Well, it's just been this way for a long time. I know I have things going on Thursday nights that I would like to have my evenings back with my kids if possible. But I did sign up for this, so...
Well, Ken used to do it all the time. I don't see why you can't. I don't know how many times we change those times because of him. I don't have a problem with it. I don't work. I don't have anything that... Yeah, so if you want to change it for... that makes it better for you to be here, I'm fine with it.
Try something different. It could give...
I don't have any...
It could also give a different...
Is there any particular day you want?
Tuesday morning at seven AM or something?
Oh.
How about Thursday?
Yeah.
Thursday, seven AM. Seven-thirty. Serious?
He's serious. I work every Thursday morning, so that does not work for me.
Okay.
I'm trying to change it. I have the Thursday evening slot. I know I have kids too, and they have a lot of stuff that's on Thursday for the kids.
Yeah, it just depends if that's something we'd like to try. We can have the meeting at any time. It just has to be scheduled.
Every Friday morning?
Is there a morning that you would want to try out, or...
Yeah, but you can't... the public doesn't normally... can't come. People work.
Well, that's the idea, was that if... you know, that's why we've always had the meeting in the evenings, obviously. Like, I know the county, they do their like, ten o'clock on Mondays or something like that. They have their meetings. And of course, almost nobody can go. That could be by design. I don't know.
Very well.
But I know cities try to do it outside of the normal business hours for folks. So if we did do it early in the morning...
Yeah, that's before they go to work.
It is before they go to work. Have some coffee in here.
Or you could probably catch me somewhere. It's a little easier.
Seven AM on Tuesdays.
Tuesdays aren't good for me.
Well, which day, Joe? Because, I mean, it doesn't matter for me, so if you want to spend Thursdays with your kids, what day is best for you? We'll just start with you.
Thursday morning. Is there another morning?
I think we should do it in the evening. You need to be able to have the public have an opportunity to come.
Friday mornings as well. City Hall's not open Fridays, and so it's... And so it wouldn't impact City Hall either.
Yeah, but the morning times would impact the community of being able to come.
You know, we never know either. It could give a different...
We might even just try it for a month or two and see what the turnout is.
We could do that too. We could try it.
We like it, we like it. If no one shows up and it's just Ms. Judy here, then maybe we need more, a different time.
But it's usually just Judy here anyway.
Well, I didn't mean that in a bad way. We like seeing you. I'm fine with Friday morning.
I mean, it's an interesting idea. I don't know if there's other cities that do it that way.
Hey, Mike, what do you think?
Mike?
I like the idea of Monday or Tuesday mornings.
What do you think about Friday?
Friday mornings is fine, too. For me, it's pretty easy. Mondays and Tuesdays are usually the days that I'm home, if I'm going to be home, but...
So what if we did a Monday?
I'm open. I'm open and easy.
I think we're at Tuesday morning.
No, Tuesday morning. We're at Friday.
We're at Friday?
That would be interesting. What time if we were to do it? I mean, if we want to try to make it accessible to the public...
It needs to be in the evening. I disagree heartily for the morning times myself. I'm not for that at all. You guys want to do it in the mornings, I'm outvoted, so... But I just think it's a bad idea to keep the public out, because that's the worst time of day they'd be able to come if they want to.
Well, what... most folks, right, they... what are they kind of? They go to work at eight, eight-thirty? They leave for work?
Well, they gotta drive a half hour to get there, a lot of them.
I know.
I don't see anybody in the community wanting to get up at five o'clock in the morning, come to a meeting for at least an hour, maybe hour and a half, and then go to work. I don't see that.
It's similar.
I'm for evenings, and I think it should, in my opinion, should be in the evenings.
I know for some, like, the working guys, for my husband personally, it would be easier to start two hours later than to get off two hours earlier. So right now, my husband has to get off earlier to make sure, like, I have enough time to kind of get out the door to get here.
I know that.
Yeah. If he has a busy job...
There's nothing wrong with trying it.
So if Cody has a delivery, he's gonna start early.
If we feel like it's alienating the public, where we hear that the public on the internet feels like they can't get here, or...
Then we change it.
Then we change it back, I guess. I mean, it is our meeting, but we want the public to feel welcome. But, yeah, let's try it.
Okay.
Let's just decide on the time.
How early or how late? Oh, we have a comment.
I don't normally comment, but I don't know when you're planning on doing this, but I've already made the schedule for March. So if you're wanting the law enforcement at these morning meetings, that's just something that... I mean, I can adjust it, but I just didn't know when you planned on implementing this, so...
So just in the short term, we might not have a deputy here?
For the first few meetings?
Okay.
Because I normally give the report at the first.
Right.
And that could shift some things from Thursday night, Friday morning, depending on what I'm doing, so...
Okay.
We can work around it.
Okay. It's good to know. Alright. Well, how... if we did it on Fridays, and what time is too early or too late? Do you think to help the... because if we're trying to include the public, we want to make sure folks have time to get where they want to go.
I'm open.
I'm really open.
Noon.
Noon?
I prefer noon to ten that day, so...
I think that would not facilitate people being able to come if we did it at ten o'clock.
Yeah.
So you'd almost want to do it at like, eight at the latest?
Yeah, it either has to be early for me or late on...
What's early to you, Mike? Are you like, seven-thirty?
Six to seven.
What's that?
Six to seven, he said.
Six to seven in the morning or in the evening sometime.
I wouldn't want it to start any earlier than seven, I think.
Yeah, any earlier than seven, I think that's a little ridiculous. I think seven's kind of a stretch.
Seven's...
Seven is a fun stretch. I was saying eight. Yeah, even ten wouldn't be a bad idea, but ten would be too late, because then if you're trying to go to work, that's too late. You're gonna miss half-day work if you're trying to be at the council meeting. Do we want to be seven, or seven-thirty?
I think it's better in the evening.
Do we want to be Friday evening instead?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because you work Friday.
There's a lot of things that do happen Friday evening as well for folks.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of... and a lot of sporting events happen Friday night, so...
Date night.
Date nights?
Yeah, there we go.
Bingo.
Wouldn't want me to have to cancel that.
Alright, so here in Friday morning, seven, seven-thirty?
Seven forty-five.
Let's do seven-thirty.
Let's just do five. Why not?
Okay.
Did I hear five o'clock?
Yeah, let's do that.
You did not hear five o'clock.
Sure.
I have to go to work at five, so...
Well, keep that to yourself. Son of a... And Dorian is a little bit asleep.
So, alright, well, if the council wants to try that for a little while, we can try that for a little while and see what our participation is. We'll make sure that we announce it in the utility bills and things like that, so...
Five thousand in the paper. Would that start next meeting?
When do the utility bills go out?
That is... I think billing is next week, isn't it?
Are we still at seven-thirty?
I'm confused.
Oh, if we include a notice, like a public notice in the utility bills?
Oh, okay. They go out the first part of March.
The first part of March, so that's like, next week? Okay. So we could try... we could start it at the next meeting. I do know that the planning committee is having... is the next meeting the twelfth? I think the planning committee is having a five o'clock public hearing at five. And they were doing that because we have our council meeting at six.
It would be the thirteenth. Oh, no, sorry, wrong one. Yeah, it would be the twelfth.
The Friday would be the third.
Oh, Friday would be the thirteenth. Look, I'm still looking at Thursday.
Okay. So we could start next meeting, or we could do it at the meeting after, because the planning committee was gonna be here at five.
This next one?
So we could do it at the second meeting in March. That would give everyone time to...
That way we get to see Mr. Iggenberger one more time.
Okay, so it's gonna be the second meeting in March?
Yeah, so that sounds like the start of the second week in March.
Twenty-fifth, Diane?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
So we'll start at March twenty-seventh.
I have the Friday?
Yes, at seven-thirty.
Joe, we have a question from...
Oh, Mo.
Am I allowed to make a suggestion?
At three in the morning?
I don't know if that's allowed.
Yeah, make...
Or have a comment?
No, this is all about...
Okay, I'm doing it anyway, Jake. What if... so say we end up having a good turnout at seven-thirty AM. Who knows? But what if, I mean, really, really, we might, I mean, there's a lot of people that are...
They drop their kids off at the school bus and they rush...
Then they're able to get here before work starts.
A lot of people of their time, and this might work. My suggestion is, what if one meeting a month is a morning, one meeting a month is an evening? We accommodate both time schedules, at least we end up liking it.
Yeah, I don't think you can... I don't think you can set that up.
Complicated.
I think the way the RCW is set up, I think you need to actually have...
It's like a set.
A set date like that. You know, you can't shift it around. It has to be...
It sounds very government that you have to have every... it has to be so many days. Now we have to remember. I have to change my whole calendar.
Alright, so the ordinance would read, city council meetings shall be held on the... we're gonna still keep it to the second and fourth?
Oh, there's not blank spots on here for that.
There's not blank spots?
Yeah, because it's Friday, hour, it's not...
Shall be held on the second and fourth Friday of each month at seven-thirty AM, AM.
And then everyone will hold live on... Let's make a deal and price is right.
So, okay, we're doing this for really no good reason, other than just because. Okay.
Well, there were several things that were happening Thursday night in the area. For instance, Castle Rock is holding their... is gonna hold their... their monthly, or...
It's... I think it's monthly. It's their parents' meeting.
The parents' meeting on Thursday nights.
Super Tenerife.
It's just every month, or...
Which I was actually kind of disappointed that I couldn't make it. As a Vator parent, I want to be at those meetings. Those are kind of one of the bigger things that I personally need to be involved in, I feel like.
So there's that, and then in the evenings, there's lots of... we're trying to get a different... we wanted a different kind of... To make it accessible to as many people as possible, and if childcare is a problem, then in the evenings it's tough. So something to... it's something to try. We can always go back.
Okay, so that's what we're trying for, is because we have parents' meetings and you want to be home with your kids and things like that, so that's fine. But just say that upfront, instead of just because. I'm not happy with seven-thirty in the morning, but I... that's not gonna attract any people in the community, period. We all know that, so... But if we want to do this for just something to try, okay.
I guess we'll see.
Yeah, we will.
Mike, have you been hearing all of this, just to make sure?
Yep, seven-thirty Fridays.
Second and fourth.
Starts on the March twenty-seventh is the first time, right?
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion that we change the time for the city council meeting to be held on the second and fourth Friday of each month, starting on March twenty-seventh, of course, to be held at seven-thirty AM at city council, at City Hall.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-oh-one, changing the regularly-scheduled Vator City Council meetings to second and fourth Fridays at seven-thirty AM. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 I guess so, aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Try to have the coffee hot.
Might need a coffee pot.
I do need a coffee pot. That's working.
It'll be fun. It'll be fun.
We could all volunteer to bring premium stuff.
I just know how you request that we know jammies.
Yeah, of course. I think that's a given.
If we bring donuts, the sheriff will come.
Mr....
But I think it's within, it's given.
Mr. Parsons says if we bring donuts, the sheriff will come. That's what he says.
I don't like those jokes. I have a lot of blue family and I don't believe in those jokes.
Alright, moving on to item seven, Council discussed the cap on code enforcement fines. Donna had some input on this?
Well, I just think some of these code enforcement fines, like Judy's house in particular, got up to a million dollars. And that is just... I don't know what the purpose of that is. Well, I kind of do, but I suspect. But the point is, that's just... it's just off the charts. There's gotta be something... I don't think we should be... if this is going against property and homes and things like that. And I don't know if this is reasonable, but I don't think the fine should be any more than the value of the property, or maybe less. I don't know, but going beyond... how would they even recoup that? I don't... who would buy Judy's house for a million dollars? Not even Judy. But yeah, I just think we need to do something.
From what I understand, it's incentive fines. It's not really ever supposed to get that large. They're supposed to do something about it before it gets out of control.
Right.
You know, so...
Yes, but the council should have enough policy to...
The cap part, so...
To do something about it, that's still...
Maybe like, when they hit that cap, there's something we can do. I don't know if they're... Repossess of the property.
They're not gonna do anything, so...
Well, they're not gonna do anything anyway if it goes to a million at that point, so...
Not at a hundred thousand, they're not...
But what I'm thinking is, if the city ever did take the property for a lien or anything...
You would want to recoup those costs, I guess.
Yeah, who's gonna pay a million dollars for a little fifty-by-a-hundred spot with a piece of junk on it? You know, what I'm saying is, I don't think it should be more than... And I don't know if that's reasonable. I don't know. I'm just putting that out there for... to discuss. I don't... That's just my thought on it, so...
I think it's a very interesting idea.
I know, you know, the council has ultimate authority on those fines. And so the council can, you know, waive them away or adjust them down as they see fit, which is what we have done in the past to accommodate the situation.
Well, I know, but I still think we should have a cap. I mean, there should be an end to it, even if you do let it go that... That would just... if I was somebody like that and really wasn't involved in the city and knew it, you've done that, how encouraging is that to say, "We're gonna let this fine get up to a million dollars, but if you come and talk to us, we'll just let it go"? What kind of leverage do you have with that to get them to do anything?
We have a comment. Judy?
I just kind of wanted to add that Leon and I got involved with something along what Donna's talking about. She was an elderly lady, and we racked up over eighty-five thousand dollars against her, which caused her to run to hospital. Because it's a fear she's going to lose her home and her property, because she never would have been able to have... And she doesn't... and I think when you deal with a lot of the elderly...
Because it's a fear she's going to lose her home and her property, because she never would've been able to have, and, and she doesn't, and, and I think when you deal with a lot of the elderly, they don't understand that you're gonna drop that fine. They don't, they don't see that, all they see are these letters coming at them or whatever, um, and, and that homeless is not worth that at all, obviously, and there were a couple of different situations in Vator at that time. That they did rack up to that kind of money for an old mobile home, you know, but it's those people's property, I mean, it's, it's all they have. And so when they see those really high caps going on, you know?
That's just hopelessness to them, yeah.
You know, it's, it's hopeless, it is, it's a hopeless event to them, and so I kinda, I kinda like the idea of the, you know, the cap, and maybe it will be a little over... Maybe it will be a little over whatever, um, county appraisal is or something, who knows? But, um, I think that, I think that's probably a really good idea, but it's...
And if the city still chooses to let those fines go, that's fine. But at the same time, I hate to see attorney fees accrued for all of that money.
Then we're not gonna get that, I got a reason.
And then drop the fines, 'cause that's not making any sense to me either. And I don't, and here's another thing, I don't know why the attorney has to be involved, if she is, uh, on any of this, I think we should have a particular form, by, at least by this point, in, in doing this. But you don't need to involve the attorney at all, it's just, you fill out the form, send them the letter, and go through that process. I mean, I, I don't know, I just, um, I think...
Would you, would you like for the next agenda, for us to have in the council packet, uh, the ordinance that talks about all this, so that...
If we have one, yeah.
Oh, we have some.
If we, if we discuss it enough, I mean, I don't, it's not an emergency tonight.
It's either ordinance or it's... Policy.
I have a bigger than being ordinance works, so...
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Daly.
Anyway, and there is no real state laws about this, uh, because, you know, for all of these big huge fines and everything, and, and I called MRSC today, and, um... There's a, um, what is it? Anyway, it's the United States Constitution covers that in amendment number eight, and then we have a Washington State Constitution that covers it, like, you can't charge anybody, um, really excessive fines, more than it's worth. So there's that to look at, but there really isn't any co, any, any hard, uh, RCWs or anything that covers this, so if you wanna let it go to ten million dollars, you can. And he told me also that the courts sometimes will uphold those excessive fines if it's something, but it doesn't necessarily have to cover homes or things like that, it can be anything. He gave me an example of this guy got busted for drugs, and he had a sixty thousand dollar Lexus that the police really wanted. And so, when he went to court, uh, the fine was two thousand dollars, so the court denied them taking his Lexus because it didn't fit the crime deal, the amount of it, so. There's that to consider too, so it's just, I mean, I'm just throwing this stuff out there, but I think we really need to do something about a cap on those.
Well, if you like, we can, um, have it in the next council packet, we can include, um, I can't remember if it's an ordinance or it's our fee schedule.
Resolution?
Or something like that.
You can do something like that, or no, it would have to be an ordinance, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's in, it's in some doc, document, I can't remember exactly what kind of document it is. Um, so we could have that in our council doc, packets, everyone can review it, and then they can, they can decide if they wanna make changes.
Okay.
Or add some verbiage as to, you know...
Yeah, that's what I say, I, I don't know what the verbiage would be, or I, I was just bringing this up.
You know, with fines to a maximum, daily fines to a maximum of the property value, something like that.
Okay.
Some, something like that, or, or something else, whatever the council would choose.
All right.
Does that sound?
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds great to me, yeah.
Sound reasonable? Okay, so we'll make sure we have that...
Something...
Um, in there, so, 'cause not all of you were involved in that process, so, very good. Um, let me write that down. All right, is there any other discussion on item seven before we move on to eight?
I don't think we're okay.
Okay.
I might be...
Um, item eight, council to select workshop date and time for developing council policies and a code of conduct, so at the last meeting, it was suggested that the council, um, perhaps take on, um... A policy and conduct document to, for themselves, um, a lot of other cities and city councils have that, perhaps most of them. And so, um, Donna was suggesting that we do that, and I do agree with that. So would we like to select a, a date and time for that? If that's what we wanna do?
Do we wanna do it before the next council meeting, right beforehand? Or do we wanna push it further out and do it?
The next council meeting is the twelfth, and at five o'clock, the planning committee is having a, a, a public hearing.
We wouldn't wanna do it.
Um, we can do workshops, we have in the past done workshops, um, during the day.
Okay.
We've done that before.
A workshop, 'cause this is, this is gonna take some time.
Right. It's gonna be a process.
You know, I wouldn't mind doing this myself, I don't, and anybody else who wants to do some research, but I, you know, I know you can do it through MRSC, um, cities have policies that you can print off.
Oh, yeah, they're all online.
Yeah.
From all of that, what suits us, you know, what works for us, uh, 'cause I have no idea, but...
I got my turn.
And then they have a fixed code of conduct, you know, so, that covers that too, so...
Wish Jason was here to help pick a date. Uh, Mike, what days, if you wanted to do this, say, next week, perhaps? What, do you have some time next week?
Uh, it'd have to be in the evenings, and it would either be, uh... Tuesday or Tuesday.
Tuesday or Tuesday.
Tuesday or Tuesday.
Well, there we go, Mike, being really cooperative there and hoping.
I'm, I'm unavailable, I'm unavailable Tuesday or Tuesday, um, next week.
I was thinking like Friday.
Well, we don't have to do it next week, we can do it the following week as well.
It's not a real big emergency, you know, there's, it seems like there's a lot happening with the council and stuff in the next week or two, so. If you wanna put it off beyond there, that's okay with me unless...
Maybe even push it out to the beginning of April?
We could do it, we could do it during the day on Thursday, March twelfth, um, as well, um, you know, we come in for the workshop.
I'm pretty much open anytime.
If we had the workshop, go home, planning committee, we could even do it before the planning committee meeting.
That's...
But we would be here from, okay.
Just 'cause that's me getting babysitting in the afternoon, getting home, and then getting either a babysitter or leaving with my husband and getting him off early, that's kinda...
Okay, so during the day is best, best for you then, um, I heard Jason tends to work until... For a while.
Didn't Jason say he's off on Thursdays?
What about a Saturday?
Oh, I'm not, but...
I have no problem with the weekends.
Oh, no?
Okay.
You want to do Saturday?
Saturdays are great.
What do you got Saturday?
Um, like March fourteenth, Saturday, March fourteenth.
Jason works on the weekends, so...
I work for me.
We have it in the daytime, I don't know when he works.
Um, 'cause I, I don't know Jason's schedule for Saturday.
I don't, well, we could set a date and we could see...
And we could always come back and we can meet and talk about it.
Yeah, especially if we did it for the fourteenth, we'll have the council meeting prior to that, we can adjust it if we need to.
On the fourteenth, March fourteen? March fourteen.
Okay, March fourteenth, what time, what time would we like to do it?
I wanna say after eleven, or eleven at the earliest.
Eleven o'clock?
I don't know, I, I kinda wanna like sleeping on Saturdays, come on.
Business, you're up. Mike, how about eleven on Saturday, the fourteenth?
That's fine.
All right. Okay, um, I don't think we need a motion or anything for that, so, uh, March fourteenth, eleven o'clock workshop, um, we'll have some time to... Let other folks know too. Excellent. All right, um, public comment?
Um, off the record, uh, I don't have, I don't have the, the big China disease, I'm okay, it's all respiratory, I promise you. Okay. Hi, I'm Mo, six thirteen B Street. Here with a garden report, coming along beautifully, um, with current events, mentioning that, with current events, we're actually, the news, mainstream news is saying, hey, we should put in a garden. This is a great opportunity for us and our neighbors to be able to help supply ourselves and each other with food in a possible, very strong time of need. And so I just wanted to bring that up, that, uh, there will be boxes soon available, um, I'll have my form and everything so people can sign up, very excited about that. Moving, moving along with donations, um, I've had several local folks donate, along with Joe from Four Corners, the owner of the farm store down there, really excited to have him involved, uh, because they really... They can help build our infrastructure, and we can help encourage folks to build their infrastructure a little bit, a little neighborly love. And, uh, so, um, I, I would love, I'm gonna put a suggestion box out in the back alley, I have a sign up now, and I wanna announce, I, I wanna announce the name of it. Uh, it's McFarland Farms Community Garden, that's my father's last name, yay, there's A.J. McFarland. The railroad is such a huge part of his life, after forty years of being a telegrapher and a dispatcher, and living off of the main line that he used to dispatch, I thought, Mo and I thought it was only, only fitting to, to name it after him. So, we have a sign up, I'm gonna put a little box out there, 'cause I really, I would love suggestions, or maybe, um, connections of, ooh, I saw this spill dirt sign here, or I saw someone trying to get rid of this. What I'd like to ask the town of Vator and anyone that they might know, and the, the council as well, um, I would love to keep things from going to the dump. So if someone has a little bit of this and a little bit of that, and instead of throwing it away, I ask that you bring it and drop it off in a little quarantine area, and, um, uh, you know, of course, um... Anyone can contact me if they want a receipt or something like that, we'll, we'll work that out, but, um, I sure would love to save some things from going into the landfill and be used to help support our community, especially in a really strong time of need, perchance. So, yeah, so, um, some of the things that I'm going to need mostly from, from my community is dirt. Dirt, raw dirt or dirt supplements, that's where, right now, I've not made a connection. Joe at Four Corners is planning on helping to donate poles, concrete, um, hogwire.
Nice.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, so, and I have, um, I have lots and lots of, um, folks who are contributing, but I need some hands too, so I need dirt and hands. So anyone's got a few extra minutes, drop me the name and number in the little suggestion box, that'll go out, um, in the back this week near the sign, please, drop it in there and say, hey, I can, I can come this day, this one week, you can have me for four hours or whatever, it'd be great. I've got power tools, I've got all the, almost all the supplies to get almost all of the boxes done. So, if I can get some hands, that would be super great, anyone, you might think that I'm gonna approach the parks for it also, to try and help encourage some volunteers from there. Um, and lastly, I'm on the May Day Committee, uh, and so I'm here, I'm here to encourage for May Day, which is March second, uh, excuse me. May second, and starting at eleven, the parade starts at eleven, but you're more than welcome to show up early, pitch in, we can always use extra hands there too. Uh, and it'll be easy, we'll put you to work, you won't even have to think about it. So volunteers are always great, we have a contest, so normally we have, um, an image that we put on t-shirts and buttons and those sorts of things, well, this year we decided to do an art contest. Adults, children, doesn't matter, we want someone, especially in our community if we can, to, um, supply the artwork that we're gonna use on the shirts, on the buttons, and then it'll go, we're actually gonna use it on the logo, and it'll stay on the logo all until next year, and we'll have a board, uh, you know, thanking everybody, and, you know, a little bit of celebratory, hey, look at us coming together, and so I really encourage, even adults, it's, you know, no shame in some drawing, but, um, there is information in the paper, uh, thanks to Sam, regarding that, and, um...
If you need more.
And if you need more, you can come to Sam, you can come to me, or Anita at the store too, she's got lots of info on it. Um, and, uh, it, it ends March first, but I really, I encourage everyone to, hey, if, if, if you need an extra day or so, give someone a call, come down and see one of us and say, hey, I'm gonna try and get this in, but it'll be by the wire, we'll see what we can do, 'cause we really would love the camaraderie that this could bring. Right now, we've got two, one from Toledo, one from here in town, so, uh, a little, a little bit more would be really great though. Uh, and lastly, uh, Rex, uh, Rex Dobins has agreed to be our grand marshal. I wanna give him a little round of applause, uh, and he was a little reluctant at first and blushing and, and humble, but we encouraged him to understand that, uh, he's a great member to this society, and he's, he's, he's such an active, cheerful, positive member, um, to our community, and he helps so many people with, with just a great big giant open heart, so... We're very excited to have him on his bike, um, in the parade as grand marshal, so I encourage a back slap and a congratulations anytime we see him, uh, so, but thank you to Rex. Uh, lastly, one little nugget, Lions Club, uh, uh, we would like, as May Day, we would like the opportunity to possibly sell some candy, um, mobiley. Um, and so I don't know if we need to talk to you, but, so, um...
Are you guys gonna do that at the Easter egg?
At the Easter egg contest, that's right, that's what we're hoping to do until the, so I wanted to put the word out, that that's what we're trying to do, is to sell individual candy, um, while, for the, to help fuel the adults, while they wait for all the kids to pick up all the free candy. So, uh, thank you very much.
Um, really quick, do you have a price on that candy, so I can throw it on the paper?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, okay, so the candy is, uh, two dollars apiece, we have chocolate bars with almonds, then we also have an assorted little mint meltaways and caramels and wafery business, yeah, so we've got a variety of chocolates, uh, thank you.
No worries, thank you. We gotta talk to her, I just wrote a paper.
Next.
Is Pam Allen, is that right?
Oh, yeah, um, I can't really stand to write this down. Okay, we're gonna do the Easter egg hunt, who's going to be April eleventh, at eleven o'clock, it'll be ages from toddlers to thirteen or twelve, and, I think for twelve. And then, um, there's three different age groups, and there'll be three different, you know, gift baskets for the grand prize, and, uh, the kids are just come, welcome to come and just have lots.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Yep, I'm writing it down as we speak.
I appreciate it.
That's why I wanted to know the map for the candy.
Next.
Um, Ms. Judy Costello. Judy Costello, seven oh nine A Street, Vator. I should like to know, question, Joe, um, will we be planning a citywide cleanup at any time before May Day?
It has not been discussed until this very moment.
Okay, could you put me on the back of your thinking cap on that for maybe the next meeting and see what we can come up with something, I'm not sure what?
So in the past, we've done, the city has funded a little bit of money, code enforcement related, it's kind of what we, I think where it kind of comes from.
I'm gonna line.
For dumpsters and things like that.
Right.
Um, is that kind of what you're thinking?
Um, I was thinking of that and/or, um, Jeff, Jeff's truck will hold like thousands of pounds, um, and he would be a resource just to park on Saturday, um, for a, a fee, uh, might be an idea this time around. It's just that we need to spruce up, we're inviting, I'll, I'll say this because I love saying this, at May Day, we invite over, I'll say, two thousand people to our community, you would never do that to your home without cleaning house. And so I think it's really important that we look around, yeah, we just invite all these people, and so in the past, we've always done some sprucing up before May Day to kind of get ready, with everything like that. Um, so that, that, if we put that on the back burner till the next meeting, and I'll see what I can maybe look around and come up with also.
Are you gonna talk, are you gonna talk to Jeff about it then?
I'll talk to Jeff.
See what he would...
I'll see what Jeff will do too, um, it was, um... It was, um, almost a thousand dollars for those dumpsters.
I think we had that put in on a line, 'cause I remember Jason talking about that when we were doing the budget, we had around a thousand dollars, so, sorry.
So if we did that, it'd have to be like in April, um, if we did it before, you know, and you're welcome to park it on my property, or any of that kind of thing like we did before too, so we can talk about that.
So you're, and you would, you would be organizing it again? So you're, and you would, you would be organizing it again and then?
Well, I can't do a grant. It would have to come all from the city this time.
Well, okay, yeah, but the, the, the funding part of it, that's what you want us to work on?
If the funding part was something you would work on, that would be wonderful.
And then?
And I'm hap- I'm happy to organize it and do it. Yeah, that works well.
Okay, just wanted, I just wanted to be clear on who was doing.
Yeah, no, I have no problem at all doing that.
Right, I'll have, I'll put it on the agenda for next meeting for the council to discuss.
And I have been Vader's beautification for eight years. A year and a half ago, I turned it over to the Lions Club and it got abandoned. And unfortunately, I don't like the way A Street looks on the corners. Kind of partial because I have a business down there and I have to look at it. So this year I'll be taking it back over. And if anybody wants to come and arm wrestle me, they're welcome to do it. It's all on private property, everything that goes on down there and I've never had any problem with the owners at both sides of the street. And I will be putting the between us back in. I'm not going to be doing all of the.
The pots and stuff.
All of that kind of stuff. So just to let, I'm just basically letting you know that I'm going to spruce up that corner down there again this year and I'll be taking that over. I will be taking possession. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy.
Sure.
Super, yeah, that's great. Next.
Angela, right? Yep, Angela Morgan, seven zero seven seventh street. Sorry I'm late because I was actually at the parent advising for Castle Rock because they're right here at the preschool. And there's only me, my husband and two of the teachers, preschool teachers that showed up, which was kind of sad. But I actually asked them to change the date. Now.
Oh, you just changed the date for you?
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll just tell him.
For you.
Well, I mean, so what's the date going to be for?
So we are going to move our council meetings to Friday mornings.
Oh, okay.
That way.
Okay, because I was going to do the last Wednesdays instead of the last Thursdays, but alright, so we can keep it.
On Thursdays if you'd like.
Keep it on that. I'm talking to my husband over there. So we talked a, a bit about a few things. First, I'm going to touch base because Judy brought it up. So Mr. Green, Castle Rock on April twenty fifth has a cleanup, volunteer cleanup day and they want to get us involved. And they were looking for somebody to, to coordinate it. And they have Nancy Bloom. You can talk with her and she donates all the plants and everything for landscaping and stuff like that. And so April twenty fifth is when Castle Rock does their cleanup and they would like to come and, you know, and Vader also to kind of help clean up and everything. So that kind of like works in before May Day. If, do they want us to come, I'm sorry, can I even land?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do they want us to come to Castle Rock and?
No, 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 because all going to be here.
Yeah, I saw what I got that they want to come to us, right?
Yes, they, well, it's for the school, it's for the whole town too, yeah. And Castle Rock will come. It, it, we have an organizer and organize even people from Vader and Nancy Bloom, she has a big, what is it, nursery and all kinds of plants and stuff to donate. So we can, you know.
Get A Street printing?
Their number for Nancy and she's at the Bloom team. She's in the Bloom. I guess that's her business name is Bloom. I don't know if you ever said anyway. Also, we were thinking of putting a signage out by the preschool and for the news for Vader and things happening with the school and the town.
A reader board kind of?
Yes. So we're thinking, we're, that's what we're discussing. So go ahead, Jeff, question?
I have one I'll sell you, so. Save you a lot of trouble.
For what?
A reader board.
It's going to be a lot of trouble?
No, I have one. I will sell you.
Oh, you have one?
Save all the amount of trouble.
Okay, I didn't hear that part, but yeah, that'd be, okay, I'll let Mr. Green know. Also, I guess the, the teachers there kind of were talking about some type of blinking lights for the school crosswalk because there's always flying cars down there going that way. And so that's something that he's kind of thinking, whereas we've been discussing.
Was, I'm sorry, was, was he going to talk to his side of things to see if the school could fund something like that?
Yeah, we need to talk to, I guess, the Lewis County because it is a highway.
Yes, it's a state highway.
Right. So he's going to kind of get in there and see what he can do.
Okay, be great. Maybe he, maybe they'll have a little bit more success than.
Than what we've had.
Than what we had.
Because I guess bike strips are out of the question. Also, the baseball field. So we talked about that and he's all for it. So I have got to get ahold of the mayor of Castle Rock, Paul Halliburton, and talk about funding, how to get started. And he, Mr. Green was talking about North County who kind of works with all the baseball.
Oh, North County basketball.
And to just, you know, we're going to obviously have to have fundraising and things like that, but they will actually help, you know, to get started and they get dirt for free. There's a lot of things that are, you know, they get help with, so.
If you don't have a contact for that, I can get you in touch with someone else.
Okay, yeah, they kind of like have, North County, I guess, they kind of know the protocol.
Yeah.
But we're going to try to keep it, you know, in Vader, you know, have the town volunteer and, you know, maintenance and what have you and I volunteered my husband.
Doesn't even know.
Yeah. So that was, let me see, that was one of the main things that I wanted to talk about. And, yep.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, and so everyone come, whoever can come to the meetings because we really need input. And he, you know, he welcomes input.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
If you talk to Castle Rock, they also have all the, the wood made chip up.
Oh.
It's over there off of.
Wood chip, okay.
Do we have anyone else? Alright, no more public comment. Elected official comment.
I have one. I forgot to bring up the last meeting about, and I do not want this lady mad at me, so I'm bringing this up now. There's a problem, I guess, over on Sixth Street with ATVs racing up and down the road over there. And she asked me to bring that up and she mentioned something about making an ordinance about the speeds here and maybe you can address this a little bit because she said something about Lewis County allows ATVs on the road, but they can only, there's a speed limit on them. Is that true?
Under, in certain areas, yes.
Okay, so would you enforce that type of thing here in Vader if we had an ordinance to stop them from doing that or? I'm, I'm just bringing this up for her because I guess it's quite a problem over on Sixth Street. And I know even on Tenth Street, we have problems sometimes with the ATVs over there.
I've heard at past council meetings, the sheriff's department has reminded folks even during inclement weather that they shouldn't be driving ATVs on the city streets.
I'm not aware of any thing that's passed down here where people can ride ATVs on the roadways.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. We don't, she suggested that we actually make an ordinance about it because you couldn't.
To do what?
To make them stop riding them on the roads, I guess.
Well, if they can't ride them on the roads and you don't need an ordinance to say they can't ride them, I mean, that's up, that's up to the council, but.
I think she's saying that there's, there's a problem in town on a couple of streets with ATVs right now. So, and they're, they're, they're not allowed right now.
Okay, but they're doing it and we don't have any.
So then they should call in and we can try to enforce it.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to find out because she was thinking, she's called before and I guess nothing was done, so she, her suggestion to me was to have the council, suggest to the council that we pass an ordinance to keep them off of the road. And I know one winter, there was this guy that was down at the end by Alpine Court down there. He had his baby on one of those huge ATVs and they were just flat out going, he was just a streak going by and they'd get down to the end of the road and come back again. And I called the sheriff's department, but it was really nasty weather and she wasn't interested in sending anybody. Oh, no helmets, nothing, but sometimes they get out there and just have a good old time down that way.
You said Sixth and, and also on Tenth Street?
On Tenth Street occasionally and they'll come down F Street once in a while. Somebody down there has a couple.
Okay.
They ride them on.
And I've seen it every day on Sixth Street because I know she's not going on.
My suggestion is if you know, if she knows who it is, I mean Vader's not.
Vader's pretty small, you can kind of tell.
And we can go, I don't care if they're riding or not, we can go contact her and say, hey, don't do this anymore.
Verbal.
Find out who they are and then we can go contact them. If, if we can't catch them in the app, so.
Right, well, I'll let her know that. I don't, she lives down the alley, C Street alley there, so I don't know, she just happened to be out near the road and I know that a couple of other residents on there have complained a couple of times that it's really bad and they're afraid to say anything to them, you know, because of repercussions and things, but.
Well, we can deal with that. They just need to let us know.
Okay. I'll ask the other couple that actually live on Sixth Street there if they know where this ATV goes, where it lives.
I've seen it in the mornings because they drop their kids off at the same bus stop, so. Yeah, with an ATV. They drop them off with ATV, so.
Okay, alright.
Oh, Mo knows who it is.
I do, yeah.
Well, maybe you guys can talk after the meeting. Anything else? Any other council reports? Mike, do you have anything?
I just have a little quick reminder, if you need anything into the paper, please try to get it to me by Thursday, Fridays, I can do it. If you really can't get it to me by then, I can try, but Thursdays are awesome, so for my sake, try to get it to me by Thursday.
I have a question.
Okay.
Is there any way we can put like a speeding sign, some sort, you know, or a speedometer at the beginning of that Vader sign? Because there's a lot of people that just speed down. They like go from fifty to. Fifty to.
Are you talking about a state highway sign?
Yeah, something, you know, where.
A speed limit, like one of the speedos where it tells you how fast you're going.
Faster going and slow down.
I think that would be a question for DOT.
Can't do that.
I called DOT about a year and a half ago over the signs that they cut down. We used to have a flashing sign and twenty-five miles an hour, twenty miles an hour school zone and all of that and we got DOT to take them all down and now they won't help us anymore. They, he suggested there's some kind of an organization that sometimes give grants out for those, but then if you put up the flashing signs, you have to maintain those.
I was thinking like a mobile one, maybe just bring it there and.
The sheriff's office.
That would be another DOT, should be the DOT.
So be DOT, okay.
Yeah, DOT is.
And Mr. Green should know how to figure that out and everything. I would think he would know to talk to him.
Mr. Green?
Or Green, sorry.
Oh, Green.
Green. Did I say range? Green. I'm tired of it.
Okay, alright. Well, that's the end of the agenda, so meeting adjourned at seven twenty-five PM. Thank you, everybody, for coming.